Okay, you're live. Have a great meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Thanks, Jennifer.
All right, it is after 5 o'clock, so I will call this meeting of the Port of Hood River Commission to order. Are there any modifications to the agenda from staff tonight?
Vice President Everett, there's one. This is regards to action item B, which is the Hood River Soaring Glider Concession. It's been pointed out that the insurance coverage is named Section 6.1, which states coverage of $2 million is typically $1 million and very difficult to secure at that higher level. And second, that there's no aggregate limit for typically for insurance coverage like this. So the change that staff would recommend is approval of that operations agreement when we get to it with executive, well, with legal counsel review and executive director approval. And that's simply to circle back with our insurance agent to make sure that those insurance terms are acceptable.
Okay.
That's all from staff.
Anything from commissioners? Okay. Was there any public comment this evening?
One comment received from Mr. Tor Baker, who's a member of the Airport Advisory Committee. He wanted me to pass along to the commission his strong support acquisition fuel tank for the North Ram. And that's all the public comment I received.
Great, thank you.
Is this for public? Is that a? I'm sorry, is that a, is that an opportunity to speak before the board or does that come next?
Mark, if you have, if you have a public comment, not, it's not a part of your, aren't you talking to us a little bit later?
Yeah.
If it's not about that, absolutely. This is the time if you'd like to say something.
No, no, I guess, I guess it'll be all about the other part. I thought, I thought the open, the beginning was where you did the open part, sorry.
No, if there's, if you have a side comment, sure. Otherwise, feel free to, when you're talking later, feel free to reference this and if you have a comment, I'd love to hear it.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, move along to consent agenda. And I need to get a motion to approve that.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Tom, in second.
All right, all in favor, just to be quick.
Aye.
Brother, aye.
And Shepherd, aye. Consent agenda is passed. Did any commissioners have a question on the sole informational report this evening? If not, we will move along to our first presentation, which will be by Marla Hardy. There you are, all right. From the Hood River Energy Council, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you for your time. You'll know me, I work for Mid-Columbia Economic Development District and am the primary staff for the Hood River County Energy Council, for which Commissioner Merriweather volunteers his time. I wanted to, getting ready to share my screen here for a presentation. To, hold on. The logistics of where you fall and where the presentation falls, great. To highlight some of the, had a big picture, some of the work that we've been doing over the last year or so related to the Hood River County Energy Plan. So, just as a reminder, the Port of Hood River approved in 2018 adoption of the Hood River County Energy Plan, which they, in doing so, agreed to work collaboratively towards the vision and goals of that plan, really helping the community increase energy resilience, energy independence, and economic benefits related to energy use while reducing fossil fuels. In 2019, the Hood River County Energy Council was formed to help the community work towards these goals without forcing the governing bodies to add another thing constantly on their plates. The Energy Council is an advisory body that has representatives from the four adopting energy plan governing bodies, as well as folks within the community that have some degree of expertise in some area of the plan, whether that be the various areas or the community itself. I will say that we are very lucky to have the brain trust that we do within the gorge. I won't touch on this too high level, but these are, reminder, these are some of the various areas that the energy plan covers. And I'm going to share some progress that we've made on the energy plan in the last few weeks or the last year and just, it supports a variety of projects that the Energy Council has in its work plan. Before I get into the details, I want to share that part of the magic of our success is the collaboration that we have here locally and the ability that that collaboration allows us to access at the state level. Something that we are told a lot when we talk to other folks that have energy plans is that it's pretty impressive that all the entities that have signed on to the energy plan are engaged in participating, as well as other community groups and public and private interests. It allows us to do things like work with the Energy Trust of Oregon in a more strategic and collaborative fashion and leverage resources so that we can get benefits to parts of the community that might not otherwise have those benefits based on the funding sources. So, we've supported projects in a variety of different buckets. One bucket I wanted to touch on was public fleet and building audits. We had supported energy efficiency audits with other governing bodies, but because your staff has been so good about doing this for so long, we didn't need to work on that with you. However, we recognize that fleets in the gorge and in Hood River have similar questions, similar concerns when it comes to thinking about alternative fuels, thinking about electrification. So we build out a partnership which the Port of Hood River, the Columbia Area Transit, and Hood River County were partners. We submitted last year for a grant. And the intention of that was to really ready the community through a variety of assessments. I like to call this the Beat Portland Project, because the Portland staff said that they had wished that they had done something like this earlier in the process. We were the best of the rejects, our project ranked very highly, but we were told that we just barely didn't make it. And so we are reconvening those stakeholders, including the port, to look at what we are thinking about applying again this year. And I'm excited about the direction that that's going. Can you answer more questions if you have any? I'm also not going to talk a ton about the funding levels written, but if you have questions, you're welcome to ask. One other element that we are really excited about is increasing access. We are doing that in a whole host of ways. But particularly, we received a $120,000 grant from the Meyer Memorial Foundation that, among other things, including allowing us to continue to have staff support, would be building a project with a community-based organization to develop a strategy to increase access to energy efficiency and low-income community members and Latinx, Latinx folks. So this slide, if you're familiar at all with the McAdams resilience portfolio as a whole, you may have seen it before. It is a very cute drawing that is intended to draw a very real question about the threats that our region faces, whether that be fires or the threat of fires from high winds or winter storm or very large earthquake that, among other things, among sending all of Portland our way, could potentially leave our entire community without power for two weeks or more. So, energy resilience is a topic that we talk about at the Energy Council and Energy Plan level for a reason. It's pretty important and it's something that we hear more and more, but what Hood River is sort of leading the state around right now. So I mentioned that we are leading the state and because we were saying energy resilience before it was cool, we benefited from 10 solar and storage feasibility studies. And really, to paint a picture, folks weren't really aware of what energy resilience meant in the long term. So, how you could provide power, resilient power from solar and storage and generators for more than a couple of days. Generators themselves usually only have enough fuel for a day to three days. So this was really about if we, how do we actually collectively prepare for Cascadia for any other extended outage like we've seen in California, like we just saw in Houston, and make sure that we are prepared. So, those studies are almost complete. We are actively fundraising for the systems themselves. We, last year, submitted a request through Hood River County to the, to the state that was going to submit to FEMA at the federal level. This project ranked number one among the state's priorities in terms of potential funding, so that's very exciting. We also hope that this information will allow folks like the ports and other entities to have a pathway for businesses and other entities within the gorge to know what energy resilience actually means and the process that they can walk through to get it. This is hot off the presses, this is, you are the first in Hood River to hear anything about this particular report that McAd just finished. It's actually in its finalization form. But we, at another higher level, there's been research in the past that have considered the impacts of power outages to businesses, but they've usually been at an aggregate level, they've usually considered shorter-term outages, and they're of course not specific to our region. So McAd, through anecdotal interviews, we interviewed eight businesses within three really important sectors in our community, agriculture, advanced manufacturing, and tourism, as well as some basic services, to really understand what the effects would be of a three-hour, three-day, and two-week power outage. You might have seen this already in your reports, but these are some high-level takeaways that I wanted to highlight. $1 million, that is what a fruit packing house said that they could lose or that the industry itself could lose from the loss of, from the potential of a three-hour outage in sort of the worst-case scenario conditions. $250,000 to $1 million is what your breweries and your food processing plants might see, starting after 24 hours, but especially once you get to 48 hours without power. You also, $100,000, that's what a certain manufacturers might see in a unplanned outage of any kind, just because they might have lost materials, they must have lost partial products in the process. No to minimal, so this will come as no surprise to anyone that was tapped into the conversation around the public safety power shut-offs. But businesses and, and critical facilities in the region have very limited to no backup power of any kind. And of course, diesel generators have their limits in general, because refuel supplies are not guaranteed in any event that would cause us to lose the power. Something else that had also sort of surfaced in that conversation that was confirmed in these interviews is that most businesses don't know what their coverage is towards power outages. And it's, it's typically very small, so for these kind of community-wide outages, there's really not a lot of coverage that exists for those. And it's a big fat question mark when you look at the effects of a utility-inspired power outage, so a public safety power shut-off. And then finally, I'll highlight the last bullet point, which is, most businesses would be forced to close if they experienced a two-hour or a two-week power outage that we are told that we could experience through Cascadia and potentially through some of these other, other ways that power outages might occur. So I've just briefly wanted to touch on some high, high-level work we've been doing and to offer the opportunity for questions or comments. I wanted to thank Commissioner Merriweather for his dedicated support on the Energy Council and to the port for your continued support in contributing to capacity. That's a really critical piece in allowing us to leverage for additional dollars and it's something that's, that's very significant. So, I have additional information included in the memo. If you want to know a little bit more about these, I'm also happy to talk about any of them more specifically. But with that, I want to open for questions.
All right, thank you, Marla. Any questions?
I don't have a question per se. I would like to make a comment. And I think the last points that Marla made with regard to the consequences of a public safety power shut-off and what those impacts could be to the community and the economy of the community are very important. And I do appreciate the work that she is doing and the Energy Council's doing in order to try to mitigate that to the extent possible for the various business sectors and also just the general public, the residents and the people that are in vulnerable positions. It's a, it's a real potential problem and I'm really glad that the Energy Council's dealing with this and will hopefully develop a roadmap that will help us mitigate damages from that.
I had one question and it might not, you might not know this off the top of your head, I saw that Cascade Locks is represented on the board. How much contribution have they given in the past? Or, or are you asking for from them? Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, so the Port of Cascade Locks is, they are a member to the Hood River County Energy Council. They've adopted the Hood River County Energy Plan. The city of Hood River has not. Just in terms of the contributions that we request from them, it is slightly lower just from the fact that the county benefits from a funding source called Energy Trust of Oregon. And I wanted to mention them earlier, but because of Pacific Power and natural gas, there's a public purchase, purpose charge that just basically allows funding through the Energy Trust of Oregon. And while the Energy Council basically allows us to leverage collaboration to get resources to other parts of the community, there's just a little bit fewer options. Like we couldn't, for example, in the last grant that we worked with the Port of Hood River, we couldn't work with the Port of Cascade Locks because the funding source was Pacific Power.
Okay, any more questions? All right, thank you, Marla, for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next, we're going to move on to a presentation from Hood River Soaring. Michael, do you want to introduce that?
Thank you to Mark for being here. He has a pretty exciting update on an application they've made to the FAA in a collaborative effort with Columbia Gorge Community College and others. And I just point out that the, this activity of soaring at the airfield is one that in the past has been situated and takes place in various locations. And now we have a specific glider port area and a really excellent operator through Hood River Soaring to, to conduct that, the activities that take place there. And it's, it's pretty exciting. I was up there on Saturday and saw a lot of activity and the work they do is something that enhances our airport and our community. So Mark's here to give us an update on their activities and on the STEM grant proposal in particular.
I was fully meant to have a PowerPoint presentation and I fully meant to have Corey Raisler or Ron Montag give that tonight. I was going to take my glider and fly all the way up to Leavenworth and back today. And when I took off, I had a little trim problem, so I landed. And then when the tow plane landed, it blew out. It's the, it's right brake fluid and so it's over at Tac Arrow getting fixed. So, instead of making, instead of being upset, I made some lemonade and called a bunch of volunteers out and re-bowed the entire area up there and moved the trailers around and organized it because this Friday, we're going to have our first elementary school visit of the year. We're going to have Horizon Elementary School there where we'll have three learning stations. One where they'll all each get in a 126 glider, which that was the glider that Neil Armstrong first learned to fly in. You may have heard of him, he walked on the moon. And then we're going to have a learning station where they learn a little bit about weather and then we're going to throw their teacher in the front of our trainer and they're going to get to go around the pattern and the kids are going to get to watch that. And, and so this ties in kind of nicely with the FAA Workforce Development Grant. Unofficially, I met with a couple of port officials and one said, "If you can tie the airport or your organization in with the high school, there's going to be a lot of money here for you." So, that is a question I'm all ears about from you guys, how that's going to get answered. But the FAA Workforce Development Grant has two sides. It has, they want to see, they will fund grants that either A, provide meaningful education to high school student, age students that, that are to improve their awareness and education about becoming a pilot, aerospace engineer, or an unmanned aircraft system operator. Well, the gorge is rich in all that. And we have a platform that allows a child to start training at 13. They can solo at 14 and be licensed at 16. And right now, I've got 10 of those youths. There's only one of them that doesn't fit in that, he, in our organization, we consider youths 13 to 25, which, because we also have a work-study program that they could be in that age if they need it. So, and then the second part of that grant is to provide continuing education to teachers. And so, we designed our grant for both. And I met with as many STEM teachers and principals in the entire gorge area and we hatched a good plan together that the way our grant program and the program would look, and we're calling it the AAA Gym through Soaring, is that if we're awarded the money in September, we will, it'll be like a college-style class, right? Because the teachers wanted to learn along with the students and they wanted to see what they liked and what they didn't like to, to A, help them develop curriculum in their own classroom. And so, our program will, has asked for part of the money to have a Tuesday, Thursday-style class from 6 to 8. This would be January through March of 2022. And all the teachers kind of agreed, I think, at this kind of course, you're only going to get around 25. I thought that was kind of low, but that's what they think and they think we'll easily get 10 teachers, the class. And so we wrote for a class for 35 students. Ideally, we could definitely handle more, because the first night will be all kind of like a glider ground school where you'll learn your FARs or Federal Aviation Regulations. You'll learn all about your basic physics around flight and lift and atmospheric science. And, and then on the second evening, the Thursday evening, we will pull in professional individuals within the gorge that will address becoming a pilot, an aerospace engineer, or an unmanned aircraft system operator. For example, our chief of safety, Mike Kingen, was a former F-35 test pilot. He now writes software for fighter planes. And most of the individuals in our organization do something very cool like this. So, Hood River Soaring is in a unique position to reach all this population. And, and most of the people at our organization are volunteers. The last time I spoke to you and told you that we were going to do this, we were around 60. Well, now we're pushing about 75 to 80 members and we've got a waitlist for our youth program. We're really kind of just limited by the bottleneck of flight instructors. And this grant hopefully will help with that. The second part of that grant will award 18 full-flight scholarships that will take six teachers and 12 high school students and take them from zero to checkride that following summer. And then I just got, last summer, or last summer, sorry. Last week, I had this killer little flight where I got my glider and flew way out past Goldendale and Arlington and came back and I turned around and I could see Baker to Shasta. And four hours after that awesome flight in the, in a glider, flying off the atmosphere, I get a great email from Dan Mar, Senator Merk, one of Senator Merkley's aides here in Hood River, saying that all four senators, or I should say all two senators from Oregon and Washington and all the delegates of our Columbia Gorge area have signed the support for this. And partly, there's another part to this which is really great in that Columbia Gorge Community College has asked for the, a whole other side of this grant, which is to start an A and P program, which is really needed. And, and the programs would exist separately, but obviously, theirs is junior college. And so, any of our kids could, we could feed into that. And when we market, we can help each other market. We've already done the marketing. I've got teachers that wrote letters of support and I got principals that wrote letters of support and the teachers want to be in this program already. And, you know, my thinking is if we don't get this grant, we've already won and the fact that I've met all these wonderful teachers. And the reason that drove this is when these 13 and 14-year-olds come to get in our awesome training glider, ASK 21, which by the way, the other organization that uses this is the United States Air Force. We've modeled our training program after their Air Force Academy. And that's mostly because a lot of our Soaring friends taught at the Air Force Academy and said, "This is how you're going to do it." "Great, well, that's what we're going to do." And anyway, so we've, we've kind of thought about, well, if we don't get this, maybe we'll do it at a much smaller scale and we'll, you know, we'll start trying to find funds for a teacher and a couple of students. So anyway, that's an update and it was, it was encouraging to read that email from these hard-working aides that serve our country. And, and I've left you with the synopsis of the program. And, and then just a couple other things here. I really kind of want to thank the port, Michael, and everybody's been really working hard with us. We know you're going through a transition with, with your former property manager leaving and she was great. And, and so, but obviously, everyone's got to shift around, but Michael's been amazing. We're getting electricity. We vastly need electricity. We need to plug these gliders in. We need a computer up there to check weather last minute and NOTAMs and things. We need to get those landing lights shrunk. Gliders have low wings and props up there have low props. And that's, you know, a wing strike for a glider and a, and a young youth in that, that's not good. We got to get those down. It's a major safety thing. We need to get some shade up there as we're giving scenic rides. You guys should stop up there. The club owns seven gliders and now we've got a lot of private guys coming in. And it looks really beautiful. If you ever go to New Zealand, the Soaring organizations there, they're like your golf country clubs here. They have swimming pools and big buildings and, and anyway, we've got to figure out a hangar situation. You're building hangars. We've got to figure out how to work together and get in one of those hangars. We can't afford the, probably the rent that you would need right now, but we're bringing the youth and the education to, to Soaring. Oh, so that's what I was going to say. When all these young kids come to get in these gliders, right? Because I've been teaching now Soaring up there for four or five years. They don't come to me and they don't know about US World Champion Soaring pilots flying in Europe. They, their mind is set on, you know, I build these RC things, so I thought I'd fly this and become an aerospace engineer or I'm going to be a backcountry pilot or I'm going to be this or I'm going to be that, right? Well, glider pilots make the best power pilots, right? Neil Armstrong, Sully, all those guys were glider pilots. And you learn all your basic skills of how to fly right there. That's all I've got. I'm open for questions or you can always call me. Take me out for some coffee.
That's great, thank you, Mark. Are there any questions?
I only have one. So, the program that you have for the 13 and up, the class, you said that's already full? Or?
No, we're teaching, so what we do is we have, you know, we were kind of undiscovered and then COVID happened and flight operations work instruction was considered an essential service. And we kept teaching and then all of a sudden like, hey, these guys are operating. So now we've got all these kids and so- all these kids. And so I have one instructor that's in Alaska for three weeks and then he's here three weeks. When he's here, he's always teaching, right? And then I've got another instructor that during the summers will come out a couple of weeks at a time. And that though, when they're here, they really move people along, right? And, and when, I mean, when they're gone, I, excuse me, I kind of limp people along. I generally work with some of the higher members to keep them going, keep them checked out, keep their flight operations going. But I'm also an oncology pharmacist here at the hospital, a father, the president of the club, the director of operations, you know, so it's like, and then we're working on getting another forced retired ATP pilot for he was Alaska. A lot of these guys, obviously, as you know, at 65, they get forced into retirement and then they want to come hang out with a bunch of cool guys like us. And we reteach them how to fly because all they do is push buttons and manage systems. They forgot what their feet and hands do. And, but anyway, we're getting another guy checked out. So as soon as we get him checked out, the bottleneck will decrease, right? And we've created a we've created a ground badge program, which is essentially an organization orientation. It's a, it's a field situation awareness training program. It's a wing runner course. It's a so what we've done is we've, we've created this thing like, okay, we may not have all the instructors we need right now, but how do we slow this program down a little bit? Hang on, sweetie. Got a three-year-old in panic mode here.
Y'all get that. I was just selfishly curious because I have people I know that would want to sign up. So thank you. That's all I have.
What we are doing is we're accepting some of these people as associate members and we're going to allow them to kind of maybe start welcoming scenic ride customers, maybe selling some water and T-shirts for us and have them on a waitlist. And then as soon as a couple of people progress through the ground badge, they go to the A badge phase, which is the phase from beginning, learning how to fly to solo. And that's kind of like raising a baby, right? Like once you get them through that solo phase, that's 90% of the first certificate. So we're kind of going to only have two, allow two in each phase for the youth and then move them. And then once they move past the solo, everything moves fast and I, you know, and we can handle quite a few people in that, but we got this bottleneck in those first two phases, which is good. It's a good problem to have. I'll come inside in a moment. You've all been here. So.
Are you any more questions for Mark? Appreciate your time tonight.
Mark, she's a cutie. Take care of her.
Hey, thank you. You know, when it's good, it's really good. And when it's challenging, it's really challenging.
All right. You guys have a great night. Thank you. All right, Daryl, you're on the call. Daryl's going to be just voiced this evening, but she's going to give us a summer waterfront recreation preview.
All right. Hello commissioners. How about last weekend? I think we're diving into summer pretty fast here. So we thought we'd, the outline that we prepared for you was timely. We had Fourth of July type traffic almost down on the waterfront this weekend. And we are doing our best to get prepared for a really busy summer. You know, we were, we were not prepared for this weekend to be that busy. I mean, the odds of being, having that many people in Hood River on the waterfront, the middle of April was pretty eye opening. But and if you got any phone calls about restrooms and garbage, I apologize. We're working on that. We're doing the best we can just so that you know, you know, everything is tied to staffing and having staff to do the bathrooms, to do the trash or to have the budget. If we don't have the staff to pay someone to do it. So we're trying to bring things in incrementally. You know, as we need them and we certainly didn't think we'd need to ramp things up as much as perhaps we should have for this weekend. So Michael, John and I are working on our plan to go forward. A lot of it's going to, you know, just have to do with what's going on with COVID, getting staff vaccinated and getting ready to roll. But we are anticipating having a really, really busy summer and going to do what we can to be ready for that. Do any of you have any questions about anything on the outline or what we're doing or feedback for us? Totally open for that?
Just like to say, Daryl, I think you're right. I think that as the COVID situation abates and I think it will this summer, I think we're really going to get slammed. Because people are gonna, they've been pent up trying to get here and have some activities. So and then we need to err on the side of preparation for what, what's going to be coming this summer.
Right. And that's what we're trying to do. So I guess that it's timely that we're headed into the budget season because it's expensive. You know, Michael will go over all of that with you as well, but just whether we open the restrooms or whether we bring in more porta potties, it is unbelievably expensive to do all of that. We just have to, you know, look ahead and say, we know we're going to be busy and we've got a plan for it and somehow fit it in.
Daryl, I won't take up commission time with this, but I would like to maybe connect with you with some data that maybe can be shared with staff to maybe give them some comfort on going back to cleaning the restrooms and being in, in person a little bit more with, with everything COVID related. But I'll, I'll connect with you on that later.
That sounds great. I'm available anytime.
I'd like to just point out as in Daryl's outline, that we've set July 1st is a pretty important date. And that's the target date for having effectively the waterfront back to 2019 summer levels, meaning restrooms open, they're, they're being maintained frequently by port staff. We have trash receptacles out that are the smaller type that are being also maintained by port staff and other things. Now, that's a date that we set, or at least preliminarily set some time ago, because it gives us something to work around and work towards. It doesn't mean that it can't change, but it means that's a working assumption right now. So that we're not scheduling events in June before then. And there's an intermediate step that we could bring back, which is the way we were last summer, where we had Bishoff was had multiple porta potties out. There were daily cleanings. There was other more dumpsters that were out for trash. And that could be, we could implement that if we see weather conditions really take, turning for the warmer and more activity, we could go back to that step. But that does bring with it a higher price tag of approximately $18,000 a month. So it's, we're trying to triangulate various factors here, but for now that July 1st date is the date we anticipate effectively being back to normal as in pre-COVID, pre-COVID time. But we'll be taking this almost week to week and so much of it depends on weather conditions. 80 degree weekend in mid-April, I think was a surprise for everybody and we, we could not have anticipated that or staffed up for it. And the last factor that's really important is staffing. We have a number of capital projects underway right now that our staff is fully deployed on and we optimally need to have summer staff available because they take a load off in terms of the cleaning and trash pickup. So just to add a little finer point, but we're, we're well aware of the use conditions and we're going to adapt and adjust as, as we need to.
Well, I, I agree with David. I think that we're going to see a record summer here. We've already seen, we're already seeing it. Even in all of the recreation of, of mountain biking and, and everything else, it's just jam packed out there and so I think maybe July 1st might be, I think the port might have some pushback if there's not facilities and things. And so we might want to revisit that to see if we can move that date to be sooner. And then secondly, I have gotten a lot of feedback from locals that they really enjoyed having a couple of those really known busy weekends to be pass holder only in the event site and not day use fees. I know that hurts the port's bottom line to not have, you know, people being able to come in and park for the whole day. But that might be something that we might want to talk about as we watch just how incredibly busy this summer is going to end up being.
Very good points. Understood.
Yeah. And I just think one of the things to keep in mind is John typically by now has had quite a few applicants to do the summer work and he has two returning employees and zero applications. So there's a shortage of, you know, that kind of help out there. And I'm hearing the same from the people who are calling to complain about things, also telling me how hard they're having to find people to work for them, you know, and so it, that's something we have to keep on our radar too. What we, I want those restrooms open. I really, really do. And same, you know, the trash, to have trash cans around the property. But just to keep in the back of your minds that this is going to be an ongoing problem for all businesses in Hood River, including the port. Thanks.
What sort of impact would it have if we had some sort of an early opening contingency provision in the budget in the event that we had to open early, not necessarily with the idea of spending it, but if it looked like it would make sense to open early, you mentioned $18,000 for porta potties and things like that. If we had some amount in the budget that was sort of there as a buffer against a decision to open early, is that something that would make sense?
Well, I defer to Fred, but we would, of course, our budget is fixed, so it would be mean moving funds from some other category.
What would the impacts of that be, do you think?
Well, it's already having an impact right now. So I mean, through the, through the time we used. And you, and you see it in the financials that you got where the hook and the event site are over budget. They'll be over budget by the year, the year end. But we'll have to pull from somewhere else to true it up. If, if we need to move forward, you know, that will be the contingency. So we're still working through that because is this a hiccup or not? Was this weekend just the hiccup or you know, we don't know. So we're going to let this play out a little bit.
I, I would say though, that this weekend, if it was unique, however, even if the weather isn't nice, we are going to have a huge amount of people coming to use the event site to kite and to windsurf and to foil. So regardless of warm weather or not, we really are going to have to put something in place and plan for having a lot of people here.
Then it might need to be some kind of combination of staff and a little bit of extra help or outside portable restroom, things like that, especially on the front end.
Yep.
Yeah, that's absolutely right.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Thank you, Daryl. Okay, Kevin, David Evans and Associates.
Yes, thank you commissioners. Appreciate that. As you know, we're about 90% of the way through the NEPA process. As part of the section 106 work, we are required to produce an archaeological tech report. After a early review, the Washington Historic Preservation Department and the Umatilla Tribe asked for hydrographic soundings to be conducted in this part of the project, which is just on the Washington side. And so the port did contract with David Evans and Associates. And they spent a few days out in the water earlier in April and just kind of wanted to show you some of the highlights of this project. Can everybody see the, see the project area on your screen?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. So this is the, you can see this, the tags there, the mud flat area. We got wonderful help from the dam operators in Bonneville. They were allowed to add some water to keep the elevation, the water height up. And so as you can see, they were actually, David Evans was able to get the boat way far into the mud flats with the assistance of the dam operators. So the main purpose of this was just to identify, are there any archaeological elements that should be identified? Or maybe another way to look at it is to ensure that there are not any archaeological elements that would be impacted by the bridge. They did find about 300 different elements. And most of those were old pile, not surprisingly. And they used four different survey techniques to identify material. This is a side, side scan sonar and this really dark line down the middle is really, that's under the boat. So the sonar goes out onto the edges and so that it doesn't hit the area directly under the boat. But you can really see the level of detail, almost the, the soundings actually create a shadow effect when they do come into contact. So here, for instance, this is the, the main bridge right here, the piers. But in the 1924 bridge, there was an access point that kind of came off towards the northwest. And these are the large relic pile left over from that original bridge. This kind of cloudiness, spottiness here, this is just simple vegetation, very low here, less probably right around three feet deep. Some smaller pile out here. They also identified a submarine cable that is right into the, worked its way into the riverbed. And you can see some rock outcroppings as well. This image is magnetometer and it picks up whenever there's really high dense basalt or ferris material. There were only three anomalies and they, they most likely are building debris piles that were simply left under the on the bed of the river during construction efforts. One fascinating, just to see the level of detail that can come through is they actually identified a tire. So you can see here that that's a pretty good definition. And so that's the level of detail they're actually able to get with this technology. Another interesting element is this relic net material. As you may know, and we're learning more about it, the tribes oftentimes will tie nets to the, to the piers. And so they did identify some older nets that are submerged and part of the, just were simply left there. And then here over, this is kind of hard to see perspective over here in the upper left, you can see the, the docks from the treaty fishing access site. So if you come out a couple hundred feet, you'll see what appears to be an old ramp for construction and a couple of other elements that are unknown. These were built maybe to support barges or some other activity with older bridge construction is the assumption. And then finally here with the hydrographic, they were able, survey, they were able to find all the various pile, probably no huge surprise with the number of relic pile. And then the same image coming from the other direction. Again, you can see the original pile or the current piers right here. And then as it angles off towards the northwest. And so one of the, let me just move this around just a tad so you can have some context. So since we had, had them out here, it made sense for us to get as much, much work done as possible. And so they, in addition to focusing on the site that DAP and the Umatilla requested, they did run soundings, the length of the preferred alternative, the EC2 route. And so that may be a assistance to those that are, will be doing the geotechnical work. And, and for the engineers for subsequent levels of work. But as you kind of come in a little bit more detail, again, you can see the current pile, but then this amazing detail on how the sand is formed, is forming just through the currents of the existing river. But overall, the, it was a very But overall, the, it was a very successful survey. There were no sunken ships, no sunken treasure, no long houses. And so I think we will have a good report for the archaeological team. This report was submitted to WSP and this will, they just finished the archaeological report that was dependent upon this, and that's currently being reviewed by Roy Waters at ODOT. So unless you have any other questions about those items, that's my presentation.
Thank you, Kevin, any questions, that's fascinating.
It really is, and I'm glad it's going to be able to be put to use.
Yeah, that, that's quite a relief, actually. I've been thinking for two years, what are we going to find under there? Have to change the course of the bridge, so that's actually very good news, thank you.
More junk than anything. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Kevin. Okay, Fred, financial report for the nine months ended, end of March.
So I'm not sure if you got, I was just looking through the packet, I think the expenditures page may be missing. I'm not sure if that made it, maybe it's just missing out on my packet, hopefully it is. Well anyways, as you can see from the traffic, traffic is really coming back to two thousand nineteen levels as well as revenues. So although the budget, we budgeted for more traffic. And it's a little bit under budget for the year to date, it's still coming back, it's less than, it's less than ten percent, I think you'll see in the write-up that, you know, we'll probably end of the year slightly under budget as far as traffic and revenues as well, so. But it's, it's good news. So I was on a conference call with the Western Region, all the tolling agencies from San Diego all the way up to, really out to Colorado and parts of Vancouver, Canada. And everyone is starting to see their traffic increase. And that's number one, and most of the urban areas are seeing traffic come back with less, about ten percent less than what it was back in like two thousand twenty or two thousand nineteen. So it is coming back. On the expenditure side. Genevieve, do you have that one? Perfect, there's another page, expenditure report, there should be one more. Maybe not. I can talk a little bit about, as far as, you know, our expenditures are in categories of personal services, materials and services, capital outlay. And you've seen this report, we do it every, every quarter. And basically, personal services is under budget. Our budget is about seventy-five percent of the year, everyone's under budget with regard to that. The key point that I made in the word doc or my write-up was, we will have three pay periods in June, the last one being June thirtieth, so we'll be really close. We might have to do a budget transfer on personal service, may not, depends, it'll be that close, actually. So personal services looks pretty good. Materials and services looks pretty good except for, and we, I alluded to it, all the porta potty usage for our recreation asset centers, and that's the event side hooks, bit, Nichols Basin. We're using a lot of Bishop, who does a lot of the cleaning of the porta potties and, and taking care of them. And so that's why we will be over budget for those asset centers. And we'll pull together a contingency plan like we talked about before with regard to that, with regard to opening up maybe earlier than July first. The other asset centers that are over, as far as the Marina Office Building is about eighty, have used, has used up about eighty-three percent of their materials and services budget. And that's primarily due to the HFA repairs that we made. And that's, that's what threw that one over. With regard to the Howyard Building, that's about eighty-three percent through their budget, it should be about seventy-five percent, they're about eighty-three percent. And that's primarily due to legal costs, just all the legal costs related to the TI and the renewal process. So with regard to those, those asset centers, we'll keep an eye on them, but the recreation asset centers, Howyard, and the Marina Office probably will need a budget transfer by the end of the year because they will probably be over with regard to materials and services. With regard to capital outlay, we're, we're on budget with regard to that. The only item we have to talk about that will do a budget transfer is the Howyard because we did, you know, we did the, did that renewal where we claimed that as TI. And that one will true up with a budget transfer, and that's usually the, the time we actually, the second meeting in June, they would normally do that. So with regard to expenditures, other than that, that's, you know, in line. Revenues, revenues are pretty, pretty close. The biggest piece naturally being the bridge. We're about, we're a little under budget with regard to the bridge, we're about five percent under. Not bad considering what happened to us through, through this year. So that's, that's a good thing. We probably will be a little under budget by end of the year, it depends. We've just talked about if summer bus open, like Commissioner Meriwether was saying, yeah, we could actually meet our budget. It depends on, you know, what transpires here in April, May and June. So with regard to industrial properties, most of them are under their budget. But, you know, like where we had, and it really relates to those properties, Marina Office Building, those properties where we had deferment or waiver of our, of our lease revenues. And so those are sort of known, we know that that has occurred and they won't make their budget. Even as they start to ramp, ramp up on their deferments, they still will end up, end the year probably a little bit under, probably about ten percent under on those, on those lease revenues, for those asset centers. With regard to, if you can raise it up just a skosh. So where we're going to go over budget on revenues will be parking. So we're, we're already there today, so we still have the big part of the season, April, May and June, that will hit us. So we will go over budget with regard to parking, and I'm talking the street parking for the kiosk and not the events, the events, events site booth. With regard to recreation, our season passes, although it looks like we're under, we're about fifty-two percent on our season passes, that has accelerated, really in, here in April. We see that acceleration and it's normal, we see it'll accelerate here in April, we'll see May. And there's a high probability that we'll meet our budget with regard to season passes by the end of June. So although it seems like it's lagging, we see an acceleration that's occurring right now. We are, we will be under budget with regard to revenues for our concessionaires. They are gearing up for this year, but because of last year, we'll be, we'll be under with regard to that. Marina revenues and the airport revenues are spot on. And so we see them meeting their budget by the end of the year, nothing to report there. So outside of the deferment on our industrial properties and the big, you know, big question on whether or not our summer season will bust open or it will be sort of like normal, then we'll see a difference in our revenues with regard to bridge and our recreation asset centers. So Genevieve, if you could move on to the last piece. And this worksheet is really just, just shows you actuals where we are. The top half of this worksheet talks about the actual revenues and the actual expenses. As, as you can see, we're about one point seven, or almost one point eight million dollars positive for the bridge. Overall, we're a little bit under by about four hundred eighty-one thousand. There, there's a big, what normally happens on the bridge replacement fund is we, we spend all, all of the house bill two thousand seventeen monies for the quarter. Kevin's working on that reimbursement. And so that's why it's sort of a lag, and so when we get that back, we're, we'll be in a positive range. Also, we are expecting some airport grant revenues to show up as well. The rest of it, you know, with regard to where we play out for the budget, where everything's in line, there's no surprises here. I think the only thing we will have are the, what I've already talked about. We have some asset centers that we will need to true up with a budget transfer. And that's something that we already know about, you know, we know about what happened with the Howyard Building. And we know that our recreation asset centers had basically been, you know, been used, instead of cleaning the restrooms with our staff, we use these porta potties. That said, I do want to make a note though, we, this is on the expenditure side, looks like Rover, but we did receive quite a bit of CARES Act funding for those porta potties and the trash receptacles. So on the revenue side, we see that. That's it, I, I, I don't really have anything outstanding to, to report or something other than what I've talked about. I'm open for questions.
Fred, I have a couple of, I don't know if they're questions or comments, I've been stewing on this July one date and I was down at the waterfront this weekend. And hearing that our parking is already above expectations for this time of year. I, I just, I'm super concerned that we are, we have no idea how bad we're going to get inundated down there. And I worry that, you know, if, if we don't have adequate stuff for people to do, bathrooms and trash facilities, people will find bathrooms and trash facilities to use. So one of the things, and I don't know when you guys usually hire for seasonal work. And I know that you've only gotten a couple of applications, can we promote that on Facebook or on something else and push out that, you know, what are, what are the age limits? I mean, there's lots of middle schoolers right now for a real board. And would love to, you know, they're about ready to enter into this, this job market. And maybe we need to remind the community that the port does really enjoy seasonal staffing. And so we can get some bodies down there before July one. And then the second question that I have, and this is not a existing budget item, but probably a future one that I was thinking about is, like, I know that our food vendor is applying for their liquor license and maybe the port should consider, you know, if there's a vendor down there that has a liquor license, we might want to have a different rental level because their income level is going to be, you know, they have a very isolated market down there. And so they do very well with their liquor sales down there. So that might be a future, just a future conversation, but I really think that we need to protect our land and make sure that people aren't, you know, going to the bathroom in places because they can't find one. And I mean, the, the event site was packed this last weekend. It's April.
Yeah, I think we're, we're keeping an eye on it. Our biggest unknown right now that we're sort of scratching our head is this job market. And it's not just the maintenance seasonals, but we also have the event site seasonals. Usually, you know, these, I call them kids, but they're high school, college. Luckily, we received many returning, those kids return and they want their job. But this year, we do have that, but it's much, it's fewer. And so we're scratching our head a little bit, maybe this, you know, the last, what's the Affordable Act, CARE Act or whatever, then impact with regard to where people want to come out and for a job, I don't, I don't. We, but that's the unknown that we're, we're scratching our head on. So no more questions, and I have to apologize, I don't know what happened with the expenditure side of that spreadsheet, but you've seen it many times, but, but there are really no surprises that, that we should, other than what I've already explained, so.
All right, thank you, Fred. Okay, Michael, Executive Director's Report.
Yeah, thanks, let me highlight a few things and restate a couple. Interview is scheduled this week, we have four candidates for the property manager position. I feel comfortable with the pool. So I will hope to go through this process and have a solid candidate to hire here in the next few weeks. A big thanks to Commissioner Chapman for hanging in there with a two-hour Ways and Means Committee hearing on, on Saturday. Honestly, there are so many of these opportunities we're trying to take advantage of. This was a pretty big one, but it was the Ways and Means Committee going on a geographic basis around the state to take testimony on various projects that could be funded by the state for COVID relief, for COVID recovery. There are two projects that we highlighted, one was the bridge and, and two was the lot one, enhanced lot one, so we were, we essentially have requested funding three point, three and a half million dollars or so for not only Anchorway but also moving First Street, which is consistent with the plan. To do so, we have to be prepared to testify and we have to have letters of support gathered and those were done. In the end, they had something like a hundred and eighty people signed up to testify. And essentially, this is Representative Benson's district, so it's District Two, really wide geographic area east of the Cascades, and they had time for taking testimony from fifty-five to sixty, something like that. So many, many people didn't get to testify, including our own Commissioner Chapman. The only testimony that, that did, I guess it's sort of the luck of the draw that did occur was Patty Fink, Executive Director of CAT, and she was one of the last to testify and she was called to, in support of the Anchorway project. Anyway, there's more of these sorts of opportunities for testimony, the state is, gosh, Kevin, you remember the number we got from TRP, it was, the state received something in the order of two and a half billion dollars. They now have to figure out what to spend it on, whether it's to augment programs and activities that are currently in the budget, to enhance those or to create new ones or to some proportion of it would be for capital projects such as like we're suggesting.
Seven hundred and eighty million.
No, I was talking of the total amount that came from the federal government.
Oh, gotcha, two point six five billion. And after all of the other needs, seven hundred and eighty million was left over for projects.
So that's essentially what the competitive amount of pool money is, I guess you'd say. So, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I apologize, I just wanted to interject, one of the comments, and I know that our lobbyists work really hard to word things and staff worked really hard to word things. My biggest takeaway from that call was at the very beginning of it, they said that this is focused on public comment and that they were not going to be hearing from elected officials. And so I think that the ball was a little bit dropped on someone's, I don't know who, who was in conversation with these entities, but, you know, that's why Patty got to speak. That's why Rachel Fuller got to speak on behalf of the city of Hood River. They literally said at the beginning of the call that the focus was going to be on public people and not elected officials. So we, we kind of read that mark really wrong.
Well, I, I wouldn't say that. TRP spoke directly to Rep. Williams and Senator Thompson who had, were told by Representative Rayfield that they would allow, and he would specifically allow testimony from you and from. Were told by Representative Rayfield that they would allow and, and he would specifically allow testimony from you and from. From others, including Commissioner Benton. And that was a change up that occurred at, by the chair, our chairs at the meeting, and there's, there's no way to predict that. Uh, so everything was lined up the way they were being told through our representatives and the chair chose to do it differently. So um, I, I don't fault TRP for that at all. Unexpected, but that's kind of the way these things roll sometimes. It's just surprises. Lots of people signed up to testify, I know didn't get to. Uh, anyway, just to reassure the commission that we're working a lot of different opportunities here to put these projects forward and seek some funding for it. Uh, and a lot of work being done by Genevieve and Kevin and Thorn Run to prepare for it. Third item, I just want to mention that um, I want to make sure the commission's aware that we are working with this um. Uh, Mr. Mike Davis, who's a professor at Coming George Committee College and providing a sort of outside uh. Opinion about the airport, its competitive strengths, weaknesses, it's uh, sort of what the vision is for the future. And um, I met with him yesterday, I received a sort of initial outline of a report. And uh, I think, I think he's now on to something that's going to be useful to us. This is something that Commissioner Strike was very much uh, behind and wanted to get and. To some extent, it circles back to the FBO agreement, the level of services being provided at the airport. And uh, to some extent, the, the way the, uh, the funding of the airport, how it, how it uh. What its business plan is. So that's coming and I, I one, want to bring that back to the commission, probably with Mr. Davis. And two, um, I think this is something that we'll take to the Airport Advisory Committee and get some feedback on. Importantly, what he's doing, and I'm trying to make sure it is um. Absolutely useful for our overall strategic business plan that we're preparing. Um, and then the last two things, just quickly, the, the bridge lifts that are associated with the. Lift span M and E testing will occur next week. It'll, there'll be multiple lifts on three days, but thankfully, they're not the long lifts. They'll be uh, in the fifteen to twenty minute. Range, but they fall, they will be, some of them full height bridge lifts and, and will back up traffic some. Uh, but they've accommodated the testing, or they've modified the testing to accommodate the traffic concerns that we all have with hour long lifts. Uh, and then finally, I just want to make sure that the mission was aware of the work being done that's in response to the weight reduction. Recall that you, through a contract amendment, you retained HDR to, to. Continue that work to determine if and, and then how we can get that uh, weight limit back up. What they're doing now is really an initial analysis of the, of the approach span in particular. And looking at the overall rehab needs, call them upgrades that were identified by the David Evans Engineering Report. Um, and then what they'll do is, looking at all of those, they will do rough cut cost estimates. Remember, there's a lot of locations where it's a gusset plate, where it's, it's some uh, bridge trust member that is slightly under the. The one point oh, standard. Um, and then, and just to put this in perspective, initial proposal we received from the live load testing firm. Which is also an engineering firm, was a hundred and eighty six thousand dollars. That's to do the live load testing. If you had to do testing on all the um, kind of typical points and also the special points like the, the North approach ramp. That's the magnitude of their initial cost proposal. So you have, and that's going to come down because we don't have to do all, test all those points. But I wanted to, to mention that because it, it, it helps understand what the sort of dynamic is here. Our engineer believes that by live load testing, that's corroborated and approved by ODOT. It will effectively eliminate the need to fix certain points. They already meet the standard, we just have to prove it. And, but we have to prove it through some pretty detailed uh, live load testing. And that report that's generated, the analysis that's generated, needs to be accepted by ODOT. To, to be a, a point or points that go away. So this next step is important, characterize the various points that are substandard. Determine which of those points need the live load testing, modify the live load testing uh, proposal. And then that comes back to the commission, the technical, technical report and the proposal for live load testing for commission approval. And we're hoping that can get back to you in June, the June timeframe. So that the, the live load testing can be done in the summer timeframe. Then that, the results of that, those tests need to go to ODOT, if assuming they approve the methodology and, and the conclusions. Then that will limit or reduce, we hope drastically, those number of bridge points that you need to be uh, upgraded or strengthened. To get back to that standard. So if we can get the live load testing done in September and ODOT review, then we come back with the, our engineers saying, here are the points that. Uh, live load testing didn't prove to be okay. Therefore, here's the approach to engineer strengthen, as it were, those points back to standard. And that would take place or be back to the commission late in the year, October, November timeframe. At that point, we know what we're facing, we'll know the cost and we'll know then we can work a schedule to, to do the repairs. So that's it. I just wanted to make sure you got some of the detail of this because this is, this is a, not a, a quick process. And it, it needs to go through these various steps. We're trying to accelerate it, there may be a way to accelerate that schedule some. But uh, each of those steps will be required. That's my report. If you have any questions.
Uh, thank you, Michael. All right, we're going to move on to Commissioner and Committee reports. Uh, we had a Marina Committee meeting last week. Um, I'll let Daryl give you a little bit of a review and then I have a couple of comments as well.
All right, so we actually got to meet in person, which was awesome. And I'm pleased to report that things at the Marina are going pretty darn good. So um, tenants seem pretty happy, nothing's falling apart, no major crises. I only have two tenants that are behind on their bills and we're working on that. Um, coming out of COVID, I'm going to say that's pretty good. I found the most interesting thing out of the meeting um, was our discussion about storage. And all of the Marina Committee tenants expressed their concern about the lack of storage for boats or RVs or anything. And um, then thinking that if Stevenson sell Broughton, that a ton of people store their boats over there. So that's going to even make things tighter. And so we had a great conversation about how the port could. You know, it could be an opportunity for the port. And um, then the other interesting conversation really was about event site parking, which is not a Marina Committee thing, but. Uh, they all weighed in on that and how they'd really like to see. Uh, it preserved a little bit for the locals as well. But otherwise, everything you can read in the report, but it was a good meeting. And we will be having a strategic business plan get together for the Marina portion. Um, of the big project that Michael's working on and that will be May sixth. And Ben?
No, you, you highlighted the two things, or it sounds like everything's going great, but you highlighted the two things I would mention as well, the, the need for storage. And not only that, but how much people are paying to store their boats and store uh, other equipment from down there. And perhaps an idea for a lower mill development to look into is. Could we develop something that does not need to be three hundred dollars, uh, or whatever that number was, a large number that we saw, but a very basic building that we could then rent out slips in. Um, for storage, uh, and, and sort of a big need that apparently is really growing. So an interesting idea, something to look at. Um, and then as far as the event site was concerned, it was an interesting conversation. Uh, and then I had Daryl get some numbers. On that and of, a very large number of those event site passes are not sold to quote unquote, local. Customers, um. Perhaps are being, you know, purchased and left in Airbnbs, perhaps they're, who knows, but there's, it's a large number, so. Something to look at and we're going to take a, continue looking at through this year, uh, seeing who's using and how, just how busy it is down there. So, thank you, Daryl, for making that committee function so well. It was a great meeting.
All right, thank you.
All right, I think, as long as there's no questions there, we can move along to action items.
Um, Ben, can I interrupt just for two seconds? I know that it was um, well, A, I want to also agree that. I think that the port really should look into boat and RV storage um, as a potential uh, income source. Cause part of the fairground, we lost part of the fairgrounds and so, I mean, it's just, there's. There's huge need for it. Um, but um, I just wanted to touch base, I know it was mentioned in Kevin's report. And, and Michael McElway's report, um, that there was a by-state working group meeting. And Michael touched on the fact that um, the committee kind of decided with all of the uncertainties with. All of these potential funding structures coming in, um, that we kind of agreed. To kind of look at more of diving into ensuring that we are on the forefront of all of these potential. Income funding streams. Um, and um, but I want to, I just wanted to make a comment because it wasn't mentioned. Is that the Washington side um, members of the by-state committee met with Senator King. And they reported back to the committee that um, Washington doesn't have a great appetite for P threes. Um, and so if we decide to kind of. Parallel on that pathway, um, it's just going to be lo- a loftier thing to do. And it's just going to take a lot, more of additional education and communication to the Washington side. So that's. That's it. They're just a little reserved about that. Michael, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I don't think so. I think, I, I think in a way what they said in the meeting was, might have been understated a little bit. And we've known for some time that there's been, there was a bad experience in Washington State and there's just sort of an anathema at this time to P three. You know, maybe that'll change and certainly that seems that we need to keep that option open, but it, it makes the opportunity maybe a little bit more challenging.
Let's move on to action items. First one, purchase of AB gas tank system and QT reader card system at the airport, Michael.
So longstanding priority at the airport, the half gas tank, of course, on the south ramp and uh, it's old and it doesn't meet code. It, it needs to be replaced. It's been a priority for a couple of years now. It's in the budget. Um, it, it's been an interesting ride to try to lock into a quote. And we honestly, because of commodity prices, the, we've mentioned it in the memo, it's uh, maybe. We may have to have that a contingency because of rising steel prices. But effectively, this action would require an exemption from competitive bidding. Um, the exemption here is to go sole source with a firm called Mascot. We know them pretty well because they've serviced our existing tank. They're a longstanding reputable dealer. Uh, Fred contacted uh, the state and they indicated that there were three, because typically you'd want to get three quotes for something like this. Especially of this expenditure magnitude. But uh, one of them was either out of business or didn't, wasn't in the business that particular line anymore and the other one was in Florida. Uh, Mascot has a office in Portland and we've, we've uh, they have offices in the Northwest. So this action, if it's approved, does require the, the, essentially the commission is, is um. Uh, approving this exemption from competitive bidding to go right to Mascot. But to do that, um, as is pointed out in the memo as well, which Jerry and Anna looked over very carefully. It needs to be published in the paper. We need to make sure that there's a public notice, there's opportunity for someone to raise their hand and say. You know, no, I object or no, I provide that. Just to know that the fuel system is a pretty specific. It's a number of component pieces and there's a high, high threshold of, of risk. You want to have someone who's very reputable, so we, this is not buying a gas tank for, for the backyard. This is something that's pretty specialized and is connected through this QT system keyboard to a. Uh, essentially a self-fueling operation that allows credit card swipes and individual transactions. It's a lot of money and the price honestly has gone up in the last four to five months. Uh, because of potential for additional uh, price increases to, to lock in, because we have to wait seven days. We uh, recommend a five percent bump on top of the direct quote number. So unless uh, Jerry or Anna, you think I missed anything material. Uh, this is for your discussion and then for, for your consideration of action.
Um, I would just say if the commission's uh, reviewed the uh, your memo on uh, pages ninety seven and ninety eight. Uh, there are findings that you've made and you have the right as executive director to make findings that. Uh, exempt this contract as sole source from competitive bidding. Um, the other thing is, I think the motion should be couched in the language uh, of the, the recommendation. On page ninety eight, uh, because it's not only uh, to purchase these items from Mascot. It's also to enter into related contracts, ancillary contracts. Uh, that are going to be necessary to hire an engineer, uh, to hire a lift company to uh, lift the. Tank in place, uh, and other uh, contracts related to the Mascot contract. Besides that, um, based on language in the Mascot quote and uh, terms and conditions. It's really quite unclear what the ultimate price of the Mascot uh, equipment will be. And so that's the reason that this language is uh, that Michael will, it'll be in his discretion. And, and he'll have the authority to enter into the contract. He may choose not to. And there isn't really a, a, an amount stated uh, in terms of that authority, uh, because of the variability of uh, pricing.
Yeah, uh, thanks for that clarification, Jerry. The, the dealer. Uh, said, said that he, in these days, he could only hold his price for five days and that was about a week ago. Uh, I don't see a huge increase in this, but I, I do see the risk that it could, it could be higher after the seventy period. Uh, the other costs that Jerry refers to are fairly de minimis. We have a quote from Honold Crane, that's about eight hundred dollars for a tank this size. Century West is the airport engineer, I can see that going. Uh, potentially five or six thousand dollars to set the cradles and, and details and then we need an electrician. Uh, to hook the system up, probably on the order of magnitude of fifteen to two thousand dollars.
Any questions?
Yeah, I guess basically, uh, Jerry, you're comfortable with the uh, legal ramifications of uh, moving this forward in, in the form that it is.
I, I, yes, I think you can authorize. I know you don't have the set amount, but because of it being fluid, we, it's hard to have that. So I think, I think it's proper.
So going back to what Jerry was saying, so all of this pricing for this does not include the installation and working with other vendors? Or is that estimating what they feel is potentially gonna be necessary to get this as an install project?
Been in touch with each, each of the other, and so crane company, electrician and engineer. And they, I have a, a good idea of how much their cost will be. But this, this action does allow me the flexibility to sign a contract or an amendment. At, at the, my discretion to make sure that happens, but I will make sure that it's the least amount possible to get the job done right.
All right, there's no more questions. Would anyone like to make a motion here?
I will make the motion as it is written in the package. Uh, Genevieve, if you could put that back up. Cause I can't call it up separately uh, from my remote location. But I would uh move that we authorize the executive director sign contract with Matt Scott to purchase the an AB gas tank system and related QT reader card system on terms accepted by the executive director. After the social publication notice period expires and to sign other contracts for work and services related to the installation of the AB gas tanks.
Do we have a second?
I have to unmute. I guess I'm second.
Okay, uh moved in second at all in favor? You gotta say it.
Aye.
Uh Shepherd's an I as well. That will pass. Moving on. Michael.
Just a point of clarification, uh Genevieve popped in to get the meeting started and then she's gone. But it's great praise uh when you mentioned Genevieve that to Kevin because he's the one running the
Kevin, you are skilled beyond my wildest dreams. That's that's amazing.
I answer the most anything.
Uh next time, I'm also up related. This is fairly straightforward. When your concession agreement with Hood River soaring, it does allow uh assuming that we feel that their operations are safe and followed in conformance with the agreement that there's an option, there's an opportunity for a two-one-year extensions. Everything I've seen so far has been impressive and how they're conducting their operations there. But this guys does give them authority for a certain area uh uh called the glider port at the, at the east end, at the two-five end of the of the runway. This is one I pointed out that Mark Stanfield said that the insurance requirements as stated here are are not consistent with anything that he thinks he can obtain or that are normally expected. I haven't been able to verify that. Um, I haven't been able to talk to Jerry about it or or talk to Scott Reanear. Uh so therefore I would ask that this recommended motion be um modified to simply say subject to legal counsel review and or legal counsel and executive director approval.
Any questions on this?
I just have one. Um, it's not really a question, but he he made a good comment about the safety of the runway with the lights. And so I think that should be on some sort of a list to to get further information on and just to make sure that we're being as safe as possible. But um if there's no other discussion, I can make a motion unless David has something to say. Okay, then I make a motion to approve operation agreement with the Hood River soaring for glider operations at the Ken um at the Ken Jen Dernfield Airport, um subject to legal counsel and executive director approval.
And a second.
Oh, second.
Who did second at all in favor?
Travis.
Meriwether, I.
Shepherd is I, passes. Alright, we have one more also pertaining to Hood River soaring.
Yeah, one of the source points for noise up there that's been identified and recognized by most everyone that's been up there when the glider uh tow plane's been in operation is is the noise. Um, some portion of that, significant portion comes from the propeller, which is aluminum. So this um this proposal is for the port to assist Hood River soaring with purchase of an installation of a uh wood propeller that comes from Germany, I believe, uh specially made and would allegedly reduce the decibel level of the tow plane by a magnitude of thirty to forty percent. Now, that's not been verified and I'm sure there are other factors. There always are with noise from aircraft, but the this uh is a recommendation that comes out of the the subgroup that worked on noise issues for over a year and uh is something that could have, we believe will have a material impact on noise from the tow plane. The reason to bring it for you now is because their flying season is getting started so that it will take a while to have this manufactured and shipped and installed, but the sooner the action's taken, the quicker we can have the the new propeller in place. It's limited to six thousand dollars or seventy-five percent of the total cost, including shipping of the propeller.
Fred, is this in um within the budget of, I guess, airport operations? Or is this in addition to stuff?
Yeah, it's uh, it's sort of in addition, but I think, I think we'll be able to absorb it. So.
Um, I know that they really ramped up their operations this weekend. It was a beautiful weekend. I was outside all weekend and they do the turnaround right above my house, so. So I have very direct knowledge of how that sounds. Um. I think that it would make us look like very good stewards to the community if we move forward with something like this, but I'd like to get other commissioners to sense. I personally don't think that it's horrible um as it stands, especially when the winds are going a little bit. But again, I'm one person, not all of people. David?
Yeah, I I'm not wild about buying for the benefit of a, you know, private. Uh, at the same time, this is a recommendation that came from this work group that we've put together and endorsed that uh I really hate to have them come forward with a recommendation like this and we blow it off. I think that it probably has the potential for value with some of the noise problems. I think it would be a good gesture. Uh, even if it's not terribly successful, uh there there are a variety of reasons why I think we should make an exception, at least from where I'm coming from to to do this. Uh, I uh in in thinking about this and I talked to Michael about it when I was a county administrator, uh the county bought stuff and gave it to the crack rats because that was a valuable uh service provider for the county and it was a way of showing our support and something that was was uh uh of value to the community. Uh, that's not typically something you wanna do. Buy and give things to uh to private companies or organizations, even if it's nonprofit. But I I think in this case it's worthwhile. I I think it it's a show of good faith on our part. Uh, it helps address a perceived community problem. Uh, I'm I'm in support of doing it.
And and I agree with all of what I just heard. Here, um and obviously we, we're all thinking the same way about purchasing these kinds of things on an ongoing basis. So but I do think we asked for recommendations. Um, I I don't think this is such a large thing that it's not a good idea to you know, show a little good faith and thank them for their hard work and and help out here. Uh and let's, let's see how it goes. So yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it this time.
Can can we ask the um the company that receives it to give us some glider vouchers so that we can auction offer? Or just use for ourselves? No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Um, but if there's no further discussion, I can make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I authorize payment of the lesser of seventy-five percent or six thousand dollars to the Hood River soaring for the purchase and delivery of a new tow plane propeller.
Alright, move to second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I, it will pass. That is the end of our action items. Uh Commissioner Kamal, Commissioner Chapman, do you have anything?
No, I'm done.
Commissioner Meriwether? Okay, and neither do I. So if there's nothing further, we can adjourn this meeting and everybody have a great night. Thank you, staff. Thank you.
Do we have executive session? It's listed on the agenda.
Uh, we do not to my knowledge this evening, no.
Okay.
Alright, we are adjourned. Have a great night.
Happy Tuesday, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Take care.
Alright.
Thank you, guys.
It's more like it.
Um, I wanted to tell you about the I feel bad about the insurance provision in the river soaring thing. Their uh operations agreement. So it was one million dollars that insurance covered without an aggregate. But when I was trying to get a land lease form and the operations agreement, although um the insurance requirements of the land lease form was more recent, that needed was the two million and the four million. So I I hope I changed that. I appropriated that in. Uh, I'm happy to stop a call tomorrow and find out.
Well, it sounds like Michael's gonna talk to him. Yeah.
Okay, that was me though. I'm happy to tell Michael that this is about.
Well, it's not a bad thing. It's just uh something that came up that's more familiar. And of course, that type of operation, type of insurance is different for the less seasoned.
Right. And maybe that's another reason why it should be an operations agreement and not a lease because that two million, four million requirement is standard.
Yeah, but it's a different type act too.
Right.
So anyway, it's not an end deal.
Okay, I just wanted to interrupt to that discrepancy where
Well, I saw it. I just didn't say anything. I I thought I might have missed what you were saying.
Sweet. Well, thanks. I um, I do, I want to report my other work on this weekend. That's getting um Daryl back those letters for the two late payers. I'll review those and if I have to, I'll mentor people with the court center back.
Yeah, I don't have too much. And I'm, I'm actually meeting with the Michael and the Chief of Police uh Thursday at the court office about uh law enforcement on court companies.
That's interesting.
And I've gone through that a lot.
Were you telling the papers? Really?
Not much. What I always recommend is that we try to get the city police to enforce state laws, trespass or other things that apply. And then uh we do have court ordinances that prohibit certain activities, but they're pretty much keepers. You can only enforce a fine and we've got intergovernmental agreement with the city. If we have them enforce our court ordinance violations, they are supposed to, they're gonna charge us one clock this time. Rode through the, you know, court system. It's a mess. We're not really in the business of uh you know, enforcing these kinds of transgressions. So you try to just put it back on the city. And then not only that, but uh even if the city writes a citation for trespass, let's say, and that's the usual one is because it's public property. If it's open to the public unless it's placed this obviously closed off limits, people have access, the public has access unless a a person who is uh given authority to do so, which in our court ordinance, we define as a court employee uh requests a person to leave premises and then they refuse to do so. That can be prosecuted as trespass. Yeah, but but the, so but even then you've got this issue. Okay, uh the police issue a citation. Then what happens? Well, probably it's gonna go to Circuit Court. And is the district attorney going to prosecute? John Sewell never would. I don't know what the latest VA says about it. And if they won't, he said, you know, it's okay with him if we prosecute. But the cost of us prosecuting is pretty high comparison to what might happen to the first being prosecuted. So there's all that stuff. The other thing about trespasses is Michael, others have said, well, we also have these people that are defenders and we wanna be able to keep them from coming back, prohibit them from coming back. There's a whole can of worms about that because in Washington County in particular, the cases where people were uh told they couldn't let them go into publicly Washington County. Um, and they they had a system for testing that prohibition, but it was appealed and the court said no, it wasn't enough. It didn't go right. Not enough. And there was actually lawsuit where I think Washington completed it as a, as a result of reprocess. So it's nothing to mess around. So that's it in a nutshell. That's how I'm, I'm.
Well, it's interesting with their anticipated increased visitations somewhere. Enforcement and I know there's a whole bathroom situation, but that's gonna be challenging. I, you know what? There was one contradiction between what Brad's presentation, um you know, we're using um CARES Act funding to those revenue attached to that for, you know, bathrooms and like some of the costs of of having a core body service and you know, was covered by the CARES Act. But I I almost thought I heard say that there was additional revenue from that that could go towards covering those costs. But I know people are, you know, walking dogs that Jackson will be down there. My friend Tracy, I would take the hound dogs down there um early mornings and we, there was a joke about we pick up so many bags and the court doesn't have any trash cans down there. And I understand why.
They have a, I know at least down by the, the dance, I think that that was true.
One of the spit that it stays.
Out of the way.
Yeah, and that's okay. We still, you know, we don't mind it. There's nothing in the marina. So unless you go over to actually the marina spot, like so that's another place that we, there was meat down at the marina. Let the dogs run and then walk them up and across the desk. You're bringing a weight spit and lots and lots of work. But uh the people at hotels gave us the hounds go crazy. Like if they see anybody and it's friends who are going where it has that hotel. They have a flock of orange jacks and they're like, oh, it's pretty funny. But um uh, yeah, I I think it's because they don't have the, the, the port doesn't have the uh the personnel to go do the collections. And I understand the cause. Um, but if we're giving, if the court was getting CARES Act funding for this, I guess it still doesn't, that's a issue. I mean, that from retail to restaurants, like everybody in the community is having
Yeah, even like six and four, like like main stock or you know, you gotta help one or add all the time. This is, you know, it's hard to find.
I need a break.
Yeah. You know, uh, just kind of like a practice tip on this Mascot. Uh, I'm writing this memo to Michael, which I'll share with you.
Awesome.
But partly to cover my ass and partly to put the jury in Michael's pocket about making the decision about whether or not we still forward because of the conflicts in language and problems with language.
Hey Jerry?
I'm surprised that they uh
Jerry?
Yes.
Can you hear, he can hear me. I've, I mean, I'm in Genevieve's office. I hear from her. Door's closed. I hear this conversation going on. It, is that you and Daryl?
No, 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 no. I'm sorry. I had no idea that my uh Mike was still live. No, I'm talking to Anna. Anna, Anna and I are both at the office.
Hi, Michael.
This was unnerving. So I'm gonna end this uh so that you're not continuing to be recorded. Whatever you said, it's, we have it for posterity.
Oh, Jesus, you're kidding.
I'll review it carefully tomorrow and
Well, uh, one of the things, and I didn't put it very, very diplomatically, but one of the things that concern, well, we shouldn't be talking about now. Maybe I'll call you at the office.
Yeah, well, okay. I I didn't hear anything other than kind of garbled.
Oh, you couldn't, you couldn't make out what what we were saying?
Not at all.
Oh, oh. Well, then in that case, I'm not worried about it. I thought you could hear our conversation, which would be, you know, attorney, attorney-client privileged stuff.
And unless you're being undiplomatic about me or something I did, in which case I'll
No, it, no.
No, it, no, not about anything you've done. It's just about this mascot stuff and we'll talk about that.
All right. Well, I'm ending the recording now.
Okay.
Good night.
Night.